Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. The first item on the agenda is a new item. It's our presentation to the Employee of the Month, and with that I'll ask Mr. Robertson to present that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you wouldn't mind stepping down to the front, we've got a certificate there for each of the Employees of the Month. I started this actually in late July-August timeframe, so I did not have time to ask for July Employees of the Month. I already had somebody in mind, based on the work that she'd done, and let me go over a little bit of that. This gal was the functional lead for the Munis Implementation Program. She took charge of putting together the chart of accounts, coding, created conversion tables for revenues and expenditures, all involving hand keying of tens of thousands of data points, and going through that revision, I think, three different times with our vendor, and they were amazed at the work that she did. In addition, she oversaw countless training classes, both formal and informal, has made herself available at all hours to assist in making sure that we have a successful implementation. In short, what she did was she took ownership and made it work, made it happen, and because of her, we've had a very successful implementation. It's not perfect. We weren't expecting it to be perfect. Anytime you have such a huge transition, there's going to be problems, but it's been exactly what we expected, and we're very proud of Terry Ellis, our July Employee of the Month.[104.32][104.32][applause] Thank you, Terry. And then for the August Employee of the Month, I got several nominations for the same person, and this lady, although working in animal control during the day, she's also apparently working in animal control nights and weekends as well. We had an animal hoarding case that we found out about had over 60 dogs in that case, and rather than sending those dogs to a shelter, which would have been very costly for the city and also been fatal, probably, for a lot of the animals, Kelly, Kelly Holland, took the dogs all over the state, Northern California, on her own time, in her own vehicle, using her own gas, to make sure that they all got adopted out through no-kill shelters. She also has worked with local businesses to secure, I think it was seven pallets of dog food for animal control and other organizations, I believe. So for her work, not only in the office, but also outside the office, taking care of animals throughout the city, Kelly Holland is our August Employee of the Month.[212.62][212.62][applause] You guys all got lucky, because I expected her to bring a box of puppies and try to leave them on the dais here. That's the way she works.
I do.
Anyway, I do want to thank both of these people for all the hard work that they do. It was actually, it was wonderful for me, because I asked to review all of them. It's my decision solely, and within a matter of about a week or so, I got probably 30 or 40 different wonderful stories about great employees throughout the city. So I want to thank all of our employees, but especially these two today. Thank you so much.[265.02][265.02][applause]
Doug, are we going to have a plaque somewhere where we can put those plates up?
You bet. We will keep expanding this. At this point, the employees get, and maybe they should have waited, I don't know, to be so great, but at this point, the employees get a special parking space closer to the building. They also get a free platinum detail from Greiner Buick GMC, valued at, I think it was $150, $160, and they get, most importantly, a full day off with pay. So I know they're both looking forward to that, since they burned it.
All right. Well, congratulations to both of you. Thank you very much for everything you do.[314.02][314.02][applause] Seeing this is the largest crowd we've ever had in closed session, I will now open up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time? Wow, that's unusual. All right. We'll now move to our closed session items, and I'll have our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor McCacken. We have four closed-session items, two for the City Council and one for the RDA, one for the Airport Authority. They're all pertaining to litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9. Three of the items are pursuant to subsection C, where we need to decide whether or not we want to initiate litigation. The fourth is existing litigation pursuant to subdivision A, and that is City of Victorville versus U.S. Department of Homeland Security. Case number's on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report that at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately prior to the commencement of the regular session at 7:00.
Okay. We'll now move into closed session. Good evening. I'd like to call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. Do we have any announcements out of closed session?
Yes, Mayor McCacken, we do. We had closed session on four different items, with respect to items two, three, and four, which are all related. The council decided to vote on a 3-1 vote with Councilmember Cabralas absent and Councilmember Vias voting no, to move forward with a validation action to validate the formation of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, its ability to receive funding, and its ability to hold real property.
All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll go into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation this evening will be led by Pastor Michael Chandler from Victor Valley Bible Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance by Victorville Police Chief Don Yoder.
Good evening. Let's bow together in prayer. My Father, I thank you for your word that instructs us in many places to pray on behalf of all men, especially for those who are in authority. We may pray for them, to give thanks for them, and to uplift them, Lord, before you. Thank you for this council. Thank you for their leadership, and I thank you, Father, that you have put us here in the City of Victorville. Thank you for our city leaders. Thank you for our police department that keeps us safe. Thank you for our teachers in our various schools that educate our children, for diligent and careful parents who want to raise their children to live correctly and rightly and be productive citizens. Thank you for the many businesses that continue to prosper in our city and attract people to Victorville to live here and make it their home. Thank you, Lord, for those in our city that make our city orderly, for the waste management and code enforcement, and I'm especially grateful myself for the graffiti hotline service that cleans up unsightly graffiti throughout the town. Thank you, Father, for the beautiful, wonderfully clear high desert climate in which we live. These are but a few of the things, Lord, for which I'm thankful, and we all here could probably list a number of other things for which we could also give you thanks. I thank you, my Father, that you created us and given us a purpose to know you, to enjoy you, to glorify you, and I thank you, finally, for the freedom of religion, where pastors in their churches can continue to speak freely of you to others. And I pray in Jesus' name. Amen. The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We have a special proclamation here to present to a better way, and if I could have Margaret Diaz come forward. This is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and on behalf of the City of Victorville, the City Council, and myself, I'd like to present you with this proclamation, recognizing all the great things you do to fight domestic All right. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to move the agenda around a little bit here, and at this time we are going to actually move to Agenda Item Number 20. If you have an agenda in front of you, that item is dealing with the presentation of the proposed budget overview from Community Services Director John Gargan and request to approve an additional appropriation of $90,322 for the operation of the West Winds Sports Center for the remainder of fiscal year 2011, 2012, and a financial report for the Pebble Beach Pool at Doris Davies Park. So if this time, we can have John Gargan come forward.
Mayor and Council, last meeting, I was able to give a touch briefly on the preliminary numbers that we had, and now I have the final results, and we've come to you tonight to show that the projected expenses for the remainder of this fiscal year, fiscal year, beg your pardon, are $90,322, with revenue projected $80,424. So we're looking at really an additional appropriation of another $9,900 to get us through the end of fiscal year. So the efforts of the YAAF, the Youth Activities Association of Victorville, are going strong and working with us, and we've been able to do a lot of good things, and we hope to continue to do that. So they're able to maintain their gains, as well as what they expect to do in the future. We can keep that facility open with this small additional appropriation. Anybody have any questions in regards to the budget numbers that were presented as part of the agenda?
No questions, but just an observation that the group out there at the West Winds have, I mean, they've gotten together, and Mr. Vanderloop especially, and the rest of them have put together quite a few programs and brought some attention out there in areas that we hadn't thought of. Some folks set up their businesses in a strip mall, and all of a sudden they realize that, hey, there's a resource out there at West Winds that we could use as well, to pay a little bit of a fee and bring up the revenue. So we're coming closer. I compliment them. They've been doing a lot of hard work to save that facility out there, and for my part, I'd like us to continue funding through the fiscal year. I'd make that motion.
Yeah. A motion would be appropriate at this time, and then we'll have him go into the financial report.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
Charlie, my vote is yes. I'm not getting a voting screen.
Okay. I'll note that for the record. Motion carries with Councilmember Cabralas absent.
All right. Then, Mr. Argon, if we could have some, you're going to give us somewhat of a report on the Pebble Beach Pool at Doris Davies Park?
Well, the Pebble Beach Pool at Doris Davies Park is always operated at a budget deficit. It was the philosophy of the City Council that recreation programs, especially those benefiting youth, would always be subsidized, and the deficit for aquatics is normally anywhere from $45,000 to $70,000 per fiscal year. With the closure of Village Pool in 2009, the subsidy decreased to works $45,000 to $50,000 per year, and this is held true whether our revenues were $90,000 or $60,000 because of these, our expenses would rise as usage would rise because of the lifeguards and water safety instructors that had to be proportionate to the number of users. So in this past year was no exception. The operating deficit was at $48,200. The lessons and classes operated at 78 percent capacity, 9 percent living in the out-of-service area. The recreation swim program operated at only 27 percent capacity. Lessons class enrollment was down one-half of 1 percent, and this decrease was mirrored in the Apple Valley Swim Program. They also experienced the same decrease. Recreation swim decreased by over 3,000 participants, and we asked both Apple Valley and Asperia for their numbers. Only Apple Valley responded. We wanted to see if there was a gain with their uses compared to our loss, but Apple Valley only reported a gain of 72 uses for their entire swim season. So the cost-reduction measures of using volunteers for lifeguards has been suggested. While this could be done, individuals would be required to carry liability insurance, you know, the $1 million, $2 million aggregate general liability coverage due to the numerous safety issues involved, but it is something that could be achieved if the participants are so willing to get trained through the Red Cross, as well as have their liability insurance. Action concerning the Pebble Beach Pool operation can be part of the mid-year budget review process and fiscal year 2012 and '13 budget if the council chooses to continue the Pebble Beach Swim Program through the summer of 2012. I think right now, until we can get a good look to see what revenues are projected to be for the year, you wouldn't be able to really make a good decision until you get a better grip on what the tax income is going to be for the city.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Gargan?
Yes. Is it normal for other cities, such as ours, to run these programs in a deficit? Is that normal?
I haven't, we haven't asked that question of the other cities, but I, just in casual conversations in the industry, yes, usually swimming is something that's a loss. You take a loss on it unless you're, I know we did a survey of everybody in the high desert, as well as Fontana and Rancho Cucamonga, and all the fees are all the same as ours, except for Rancho Cucamonga, who does charge $5 for recreation swim. Everybody else is $1.75 to $2.25. We're at $2. Same thing with the lessons. They're all $30 to $32 for the series of lessons. So...
I think it would be prudent to look at other cities and find successful cities that are operating not at a deficit. I mean, obviously, I think that these types of programs, that's what our tax dollars are for, is to invest in these programs. So it might be common, but if we can find some successful cities out there, maybe we can mirror it. I know that you said in the last meeting that we had that they, I guess, management cut out the schedules that you send out to every home?
Yeah. We had, our recreation and advertising budget had been up to $50,000, and it is now zero. So we've had to cut out a lot of advertising, and one of the main things was the printing of our recrusher, which is available now online, and we do have reminder cards that we do send out, though, to allow...
And I do see that you started an email program, which is good. It'll save on money, but maybe if there's other ways that other cities are more successful at these programs.
I'll have staff research that. I can tell you, other areas that may be able to operate year-round are going to be able to not have a big a deficit, because naturally, when you're running year-round, you're not having the pool being maintained for nine months without any use happening. Unfortunately, at that location, we can't drain the pool and leave it empty because of the groundwater near the oil ground to wash. All it would take would be a good heavy rainstorm come through and the groundwater raise, and it'll pop that pool right out of the ground, and now you're going to have hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not a million dollars worth of repairs, or just have complete replacement of the pool. So that's why we have to keep it full and going.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
John, just one question. The pool is closed at this point in the year, am I right?
Yes. It opens Memorial Day weekend. It always closes the end of August or the first weekend of September, depending on the school schedules.
But just in the normal course of things, for the next nine months, it'll be closed?
Yes.
Maintained, but closed?
Yeah. It's going to be maintained now at a very minimal level compared to how we have in the past, because we only put in the budget just enough to try to keep it at a bare minimum, waiting for the decision of council at mid-year to see if we're going to be able to go full-forward on next swim season. But the closure right now is nothing out of the ordinary. It always closes this time of the year. The only time it's ever been open is when Granite Hills High School used the pool when Apple Valley had closed all their pools down. They did not have anything available to them for their water polo team, and they rented it, and we were able to then piggyback on that use, because the pool was heated to offer classes at that time. But since they departed, since they've got the pools back and they use that over there, then we no longer offer those.
John, if I could ask you to stick by, I've got a few comment cards on this issue, so if there are any questions. Pastor Dane Davis?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. A side note, I just want to commend you. In recent months, I've been a part of several of these meetings, and you have been on the receiving end of quite a firestorm over a number of issues, and I'm reading in the Daily Press today about the dealings with United Furniture there on the Logistics Airport. I was applauding you at home, reading that article. Thank you very, very much for your hard work in helping to solicit that lease of that million-square-foot facility. That's going to be a real blessing, being very close to my church facility, and you ought to be commended. Please, on behalf of our community, forgive us. We're quick to criticize you when you do things we deem not so hot, but at the same time, we don't commend you when you do things that are very, very good for our city. That's one of them I commend you for, and so thank you very much. Even getting calls at midnight, it sounds like, Mayor, so thank you very much for your efforts there, and I look forward to those hundreds of jobs coming in the next few years. That's going to be a big blessing. I just want to speak about a few things. When I stood before you a couple months ago, I mentioned that one of my concerns with West Winds closing was going to be vandalism, and now we have ample evidence in the past eight weeks that vandalism is alive and well, unfortunately, there on that side of the Logistics Airport. My church is a chiller unit, which is, as the bird flies, probably about 200, 250 feet from the West Winds facility, was vandalized to the tune of $10,000 just six, seven weeks ago. Several weeks after that, we underwent a second vandalism, which added a few hundred dollars more of damage, and then in two nights, four weeks ago, the manhole cover from in front of the gymnasium was popped up. Copper wire was pulled out of that manhole. They proceeded to tie the copper wire to the back bumper of their truck, drove across the full length of our church parking lot, hopped a curb, knocked our mailbox over, came back two nights later, knocked the light post over. And so if you close the facility, we've got a very, very real threat of vandalism. Our phones were out for three days last week as a result of copper being stolen again. As they came back a second time, the school across the street from us there on Nevada Avenue is still, as I understand it, without a phone service because of that same type of vandalism. So they are literally going manhole cover by manhole cover up and down George Boulevard and yanking out copper wire, pulling it from AC units wherever they can find it. And so if we remove the community presence from that gym and we close that thing, it's a very, very real threat. We're installing video cameras and doing everything we can. But yeah, as kind of another side note, we as a church there on facility, as an owner of that facility, and the City of Victorville are very much in the same boat, because Sterling does not consider us as tenants. We don't get the same security service that their patrols are giving the tenants there on the airstrip side of the base. And so possibly in the days and weeks to come, we could work out an arrangement where the city and the church and the school can work together somehow to help keep that facility, that area of the airport... that area of the airport, a little more safe. Aside from that, I've just been blessed to pop by the gym several times in the last few months, see teenagers, young adults playing basketball. It's a wonderful thing for our community and I'm very proud of all our community members who have come alongside each other, come alongside you, come alongside Park and Rec to help keep this gym open and to help generate some income to curb those costs that we've been incurring. It's been a blessing to be a part of. I think this is exactly the type of thing that the City Council should be behind and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And thank you to you and all the volunteers who have put in so many hours and tireless work to somehow supplement the budget for that facility. You know, we're not, I don't think we're completely there, but we're working towards that. Obviously, this council has agreed tonight to keep it open through the rest of this fiscal year. There's still a lot of work to be done, you know, and I continue as well as I would imagine this entire council to offer up our services if there's anything we can do to help. But we're just so thankful that your group has stepped up and done the needed work to keep that facility open. So, kudos to you and thank you so much for what you've done. Reverend Rafael Pores?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Councils. My request to keep West Winds open for the fiscal year, I think it can be a great thing and do all my part financially to try to support the project and see we can get the same support from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Vanderloop?
Council members, fellow citizens of Victorville and area. My name is Jonathan Vanderloop and I'm one of the members of the Youth Activities Association of Victorville. And I'm happy to report that we've made a lot of progress in the two months that you've given us to try and come up with a plan. In July, we reduced the losses at the West Winds from forty-eight hundred dollars to thirty-six hundred dollars, or about twenty-five percent reduction. And in August, we were able to cut the cost nearly two-thirds, or sixty-five percent, down to less than eighteen hundred dollars a month. So, you can see that we're on our way to becoming revenue neutral. And with more cooperation from the city, et cetera, we expect to be in the black within six months and then start using the surplus to make needed improvements to the West Winds. We have a number of things that we've identified for improvements that could be done once funds are available. Right now, we're planning on adding zumba dancing, girls volleyball, girls volleyball, court soccer, badminton, paddle tennis, and special events. And we also have been contacted by a number of churches in addition to the two you heard from tonight, who would like to rent some of the facilities at times from different parts of the city. So, we feel that we're on the right road here. And I'd like to tell you a brief story before I conclude. Recently, Senator Runner, who is the state senator from this area, I believe, or at least part of this area, was on a show and I heard him talking about how much it costs to incarcerate one juvenile prisoner, basically. And it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So, you can see at eighteen hundred dollars a month, we could keep that place going for one incarcerated juvenile for a year. We could keep that place going for six or seven years. And we feel that the cost of preventing crime, one dollar say spent on preventing people getting into crime, will save about twenty dollars in police and prison and all of the other things besides the fact that we're losing the potential of that person. Remember, the first time we were here, one of the coaches from West Winds was out here and he was talking about how he saved fifteen students, including his son, just by using the West Winds and other facilities like that to keep them out of trouble and out of gangs. And I believe his son was now in medical school. And he called his dad up and said, "Please, Dad, do everything you can to keep the West Winds open because if we're looking for the West Winds, I wouldn't be in medical school. I'd probably be in prison." So, I leave you with that, that one dollar in prevention and activities for our youth can save twenty dollars to taxpayers or more in the future. Plus, how many lives will it save? Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Mitchell and Michelle Turner?
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a quick comment, just while they're on their way down. A couple of the activities group were out in the lobby earlier. Mr. Vanderloop, you'd requested this item be taken first. It's already actually been voted on and approved. So, the facility is staying open for the remainder of the fiscal year. It sounded like from some of the comments, you weren't entirely sure of that. So, I wanted to make sure you knew that.
Hi, I'm Suzanne. This is Michelle. We just want to stand up here about the pool as well. We also believe that it's much better to save money and save kids, both on safety and danger, save our neighborhoods. I mean, it just, it means so much to keep the Recreation Center open and the pool open for our kids. I have a petition that I started. I have about ten petitions out there right now. I have two copies for you that I could get ahold of again. There's a lot of concerned people out there. And one of the thoughts that we also had was, why do we close it so early? Would it help the budget if we kept it open? We do live in the desert, still in the nineties. You know, maybe on the weekends, the kids can still go there, even though school has started, just a thought. I'm not sure if that costs more or less, but if it helps, that would be great. I'm just hoping that you keep it open at least through 2012 so we can keep discussing it.
The only thing I would like to suggest is, has anyone considered renting out the pool for parties or other things, not just, you know, as well as for the churches, but just private parties? You know, that's... But if you're closing it after three, three and a half months, there's still other times that it might be able to be used.
If you would open at a time of the year, I guess is the question.
The issue is with our lifeguards, they're all, most of them are all part-time in college and students or school students, and we lose them back to school. Try to keep them on board and bring them back just periodically would be very tough to do if we lose them to either their school or other jobs that they go to at this time. It's something that we've looked at in the past, not to say that it wouldn't work now, but those are issues that we face because you have to have somebody that is certified to be there even with a private party.
True, but as you suggested, if people are willing to volunteer their own time...
Right, that's an option.
So, we should be able to be given that option, not just, you know, the college kids, but I know we're a little older than college kids, but most of us can still do it too.
It is open. That is an option and we'd be glad to entertain that.
And I think, and I think we have, we've got several months to try and figure this out, work through some of those issues, try to figure out how we can bring on volunteers to do just that. I don't, I mean, I don't normally speak for the rest of the council up here, but I'm going to right now. If there's someone up here that is not in favor of keeping that pool open, I'd be surprised. So, you know, we're going to, staff knows the direction that this council wants to go. They understand, they've got to figure out a way. And West Winds is a prime example of staff working with the community to keep a facility open. They did a great job. I think they should be applauded for it. I'm not sure that I heard that tonight, but you know, that facility's going to stay open, at least through the end of this next fiscal year. And we're going to figure out ways that we can keep the pool open at Doris Davies Park. I just can't see this council voting to close that. We'll cut in other areas if we have to. I'm hopeful that we don't have to cut at all. I'm hopeful that, you know, we're starting to see some economic turnaround, some positive signs, you know, four hundred new jobs in our community. That's a huge deal. There's good things going on. So, please, keep yourself engaged in this process, but I think we've got a couple of months to work this out. And we do intend on having this discussion probably February, March as to keeping it open in the next fiscal year. And I'd be surprised if you found that this council would not be willing to do that.
I appreciate you saying that. I just want to make sure February and March isn't too late. That scares me.
It's not too late.
Okay.
It's not too late. Plenty of time to still get the decision done and that pool open, so...
Okay. I have one more thing to say. Are you done with the pool? Okay. Just as a side note, I've already talked to Captain Yoder and I'm going to go to the meeting tomorrow as well. I was robbed on Friday. I just want to put that out there. I'm not in Brentwood. It's just very disturbing. I don't even know what else to say because I'm going to discuss it with him later, but FYI. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right. At this time, we'll move into another presentation. Councilmember Vias and I had the opportunity to meet with the President, CEO of the Housing, San Bernardino County Housing Authority last Thursday, Susan Benner. And at that meeting, we asked her to come and make a presentation to this council about Section Eight housing and the housing authority in general. So, I've asked, we've asked her to come here tonight and so, Susan, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of you, Mayor, members of the council, for this opportunity tonight to talk to you and hopefully give you some insight as to who we are and what we actually do. I know there are a lot of misconceptions out there, so we're hoping that we can help you with that. As far as who we are, we were actually formed in 1941 by the County Board of Supervisors. We are, although we're formed by the Board of Supervisors, we are not a county department under the county's umbrella. We operate under state health and safety code laws. However, we're not a state agency either. We are funded for the programs that we administer, or at least for the majority of them, by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. However, we are not a federal agency either. We are not HUD. I guess one would say that we are kind of a standalone government agency and sort of an agent for HUD in administering the programs for which they give us funding for. We are governed by a seven-member Board of Commissioners. Our board members, five of those are selected by a board of, a member of the Board of Supervisors, so they appoint someone from each of their jurisdictions to represent them. By state law, we have to have two tenant commissioners on our board, one which has to be a senior citizen. And those are both appointed also by whoever is the chairman of the board at the time of that appointment. With respect to our jurisdiction, we serve the entire county of San Bernardino with the exception of Upland and Needles. And the reason we don't have jurisdiction there is they have their own housing authorities. The housing authority is tasked, yes, to provide affordable housing and we do primarily serve the low-income individuals and families throughout the county. For instance, in the city of Victorville, forty-one percent of the individuals that we actually serve in this city are seniors and disabled. The housing programs that we do provide under these guidelines is one we call the Housing Choice Voucher. It's not referred to as Section Eight any longer. And we also have what we call affordable housing. And those are units that we actually own and we maintain, or we hire a private management company to come in and maintain and operate those for us. There are currently fifty thousand applications on our housing program waiting lists, and most of those lists have been closed for a number of months and even years. So, with respect to who we are, we know that we're tasked by what we do to provide affordable housing. But our mission goes way beyond that. We really do believe that affordable housing programs should be provided to assist families through tough times and is not really meant to be a lifetime benefit for those that are capable of working and providing and giving back to their communities. With that said, our mission really is to empower all individuals and families in need to achieve an enriched quality of life by not only providing those housing opportunities, but also the other resources that they need in order to become self-sufficient and contributive A little known fact about the housing authority is that we actually in 2008 were received a designation from Congress, which is called Moving to Work. Now, there are thirty-two, thirty-two hundred housing authorities across the nation, and there's only thirty-five housing authorities that have been given this special designation. The purpose of this designation that was awarded to us was for three very poignant reasons. One is to help develop self-sufficient clients and develop programs that forward that mission, to ensure freedom of housing choice, where everybody has an opportunity to choose where they live, and also saving taxpayers' dollars through operational efficiencies. And we take all of these, these three objectives and statutory requirements very seriously. This designation that they have given us and this flexibility to be able to operate outside of the federal laws that govern those programs has actually helped us to forward our mission and our policy of up and out, which is what we want for our clients. As a moving to work agency, we provide more than just housing to our clients. In conjunction with an extensive list of community partners such as the University of New Melinda, Inland Behavioral Health, Department of Behavioral Health, we provide case management and counseling. And we are in the process currently of hiring in-house case managers and NSWs to be onsite. We assist with career training and job placement. Some of our partners is the Workforce Investment Board, SABATA. We have education and computer labs on our sites with Career Institute providing services to our clients to help them do resumes and job searches. And last but not least, one of the things that we have instituted a few years ago was actually a program integrity program. And we have a program integrity department onsite. And the reason for that is to ensure that the taxpayers' dollars are spent on deserving clients and not individuals that want to abuse our system. We have extensive partnerships in doing the program integrity unit. We work with all of the police departments. We work with many offices of the Sheriff's Department throughout the county and we work with the Office of Inspector General to make sure that program fraud does not exist when we're made aware of it. Soon to be implemented in our program through our Moving to Work designation is also work requirements and term limits for the assistance that we provide. I want to share with you a little bit about how the program works. I know many people refer to it as Section Eight, but the Housing Choice Voucher program that we administer actually is about issuing a voucher to qualified individuals. We have, as I said, about fifty thousand people on our waiting list. Over twenty thousand of those are just on the Housing Choice Voucher waiting list. Of those individuals, when they come up to the top of the waiting list, we do two very important screening criteria to find out if they're even eligible for that voucher. The first one is we do a background check on all individuals over the age of eighteen. So, every adult member must clear an extensive background check and we look for violent, drug, criminal records. And we also look at what we call a preponderance of evidence if there's bad behavior that has been exhibited by this and it's in that criminal record. Based on the bad behavior records, then we will deny housing. To the best of my knowledge, nationally, we're the only one that goes back ten years. HUD guidelines really ask you to back three years. Our board in our policy for this, our board has created a policy that was very restrictive and we wanted to make sure that we adhered to that, so ten years is how far back we could go. The second criteria after that is whether they are income-qualified. They have to be of low income. And if they meet these two criterias, then yes, we enter into a voucher with them. We issue the voucher. The client then takes the voucher and they can go anywhere they want to look for housing. It can be here in our county. It could even be on the east... It can be here in our county. It could even be on the East Coast. That Choice Voucher allows them to select a home, or an apartment, or whatever residence, anywhere. The client then enters into a lease directly with that landlord. We are not the landlord. The housing authority enters into a contract with the client, I mean, I'm sorry, with the landlord, agreeing to pay a certain portion of the rent directly to them. The client pays a certain portion and we pay the difference. As I said, we are not the landlord. When we issue vouchers, obviously, we have to adhere to fair housing rules. We cannot deny them access and we can, we have to ensure that they have every opportunity to be successful in this program. Fair housing rules, the Fair Housing Act was actually instituted back in 1968. And it specifically prohibits individuals to be denied rent. Landlords even are not allowed to deny them rent based on who they are, how they dress, what they look like, and the fact that they have a Section 8 Housing Choice voucher. So they have, they do have rights and they are protected. When we issue vouchers, we actually go and re-inspect units. They don't just get to move in. We make sure that that unit does pass housing quality standards. And that is a long, laundry list of things that that unit must have. It must be, it must be decent, safe, and sanitary. If the unit does not pass inspection, therefore, they can't move in. A landlord is given an opportunity to correct those violations if they choose to do that, and we will go back and do a re-inspect. But we do have that flexibility and we do adhere to that. Once that individual and landlord have agreed on a negotiated rent and it's passed the housing quality standards inspection, they have the right to move in. Who we serve. The individuals that we do serve is thirty thousand of them. The majority of them are children, seniors, and disabled. There are individuals that work in minimum wage jobs sometimes. And this group lost numerous jobs during this downturn in the economy. We saw a lot of our rental assistance increase because they had a loss of wages. There are students in job training programs, vocational schools. There are heads of household and their dependents that actually go to community colleges and universities. Yes, I would be lying if I didn't say that there are occasionally bad apples in the program. But I'm here to tell you, we are your partner in waiting out bad apples. We don't want them in your community any more than we want them in our program. We work very diligently and very strongly with law enforcement on many levels to ensure that these clients do not receive assistance from us. When we do terminate assistance from clients, we stop paying to the landlord. And that's as far as we can go. We don't evict because they don't have a lease with us. It's not our job to evict them. If a landlord elects to leave them in the unit or allow them to stay there, they can do that. And we have no rights to kick them out of that apartment or that house or any unit. With that said, more times than not, they can't afford it and they do move, but that is not always the case. So I leave you tonight with at least who to call if you have questions, who to contact if you have problems with our program. As I said, we want to be your partner. We want to be able to help whenever we possibly can. We don't profess to be perfect at what we do. We try our best. We are open to trying new things and as long as we aren't violating someone's fair housing laws, we're here to make it work. But there are areas that our hands are tied. We cannot violate someone's rights. We can't prosecute or ask the Sheriff's Department to try to prosecute based on bad behavior that isn't criminal, the way they look, the way they act. But we will go as far as we can to ensure that our clients are the best in your community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Susan. We appreciate you coming up here and making this presentation to the council this evening. I know it was, it was definitely good for myself and Councilmember Vias to have you come and meet with us, especially in light of all the concerns that have been expressed during public comment or the last several council meetings. But aside from that, I'd like to open it up to the council if there are any questions of, Susan, that you would like to ask at this point in time.
Yes. So let's say that you have a complaint, a noise complaint. Somebody calls your hotline and they don't know if it's Section 8, right? So they're just gonna give you the address? Is that how it works?
Well, we prefer they give us as much information as they possibly can.
If they just have the address?
If they have the address. I mean, in terms of a noise complaint, there isn't a lot that we can do. We will work with the Sheriff's Department. We will communicate with the Sheriff's Department. I know they look at their logs for calls of service. I know we keep a log in the WITIP process. We keep a complete log. But then a noise isn't necessarily a criminal violation. We can bring them in. We can counsel them. We can inform them that we have had complaints. But that's really, at that particular point, that's all we can do with that one. But we look at every WITIP we get and we look at every complaint that we get from the Sheriff's Department and we're in constant communication.
So basically, there's nothing you can do unless it's criminal?
That's, yeah. Unless they have, unless they have violated the program somehow, committed fraud in somehow, or unless they have committed some criminal act, we cannot remove that assistance. But I assure you, we are aware of most behaviors that are occurring out there. And even though we may not call that tenant back and say, you know, we've checked into it and so forth, we can't, we couldn't call everybody back because we would be violating the person's rights on the program if we disclose they're on the program. So there's a very fine line that we have to walk in terms of how much information we can come out with. At the same time, like I said, we do look for a preponderance of evidence. We do as much as we can, but if it's not criminal and it's not against the law, then we have no rights to do anything.
You stated that right now Brentwood has a hundred and thirty-four foreclosures
Yes.
in our meeting, and they're being sold at approximately a hundred and eleven thousand and being bought by investors.
Well, I think it was discussed at that meeting that the units in Brentwood are selling much cheaper than what they were two or three years ago. I think we looked up some of those foreclosures at the time of that meeting and probably found some that were selling for that amount. That doesn't mean broadly across all of Brentwood that that's what they're selling for. But yes, there, we have, our database shows there's a hundred and thirty-four that are in foreclosure and the sale prices vary.
So it could be that a lot of people just assume that houses are Section 8, but they could be just absentee landlords, correct?
That is correct. Or banks.
And we would never find out because you can't violate their rights?
What we did do is we took all of the foreclosure databases that we could find and all the addresses that are posted online through these databases and matched them with individuals that are on our program. And we did not find one that was being rented by a Section 8 person. That's not to say when the foreclosure process started, we had some in the high desert area, but it was a scattering of that and individuals lost their units because banks took those units over. But right now, we are not aware of any in Brentwood that are Section 8.
And how much does a section, how much, how much voucher do they get for a three or four-bedroom house? How much do you pay for the rent?
Fortunately, I didn't bring our current payment standards with me, but the portion of rent that we pay to the landlord is really part of a calculation because it depends on the income of that family, whether it's a fixed income that they're receiving or whether it's through wages or some other source. There, the client is to pay thirty percent of their adjusted gross income towards the rent and then we pay the difference.
I think a figure was thrown at me and Ryan, about seventeen hundred. Was that right?
Well, what I recall in the meeting that we had was a three-bedroom house was going, there was a fourteen hundred dollar payment. You just recently reduced that
To eleven hundred.
in June to, I think it was nine.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I have my notes from the meeting. I was also involved in that meeting. One-bedroom house was six hundred dollars, two-bedroom, seven hundred dollars, three-bedroom, eleven hundred dollars, four-bedroom, seventeen hundred dollars, five-bedroom, nineteen fifty-five. And as I recall, Susan, housing authority is reviewing both the four and five-bedroom dollar figures at this point because they still seem on the high side, but it's
Correct.
a rarely-used option because of the numbers, requirements for numbers in the, in the household.
Correct. We have contracted, as I said, with a third-party consultant to do a rent study across the entire county. We have reduced the rents and we have one submarket for the higher desert, this area, Apple Valley, Victorville, Hesperia, and Atlanta. And as Mr. Robinson had stated, that's what the payment standard is. That's the maximum that we would ever pay a landlord. But like I said, our portion, the taxpayer-dollar portion that goes to the landlord is really based on how much the tenant can afford to pay. So they have to pay thirty percent of their adjusted gross income and then we pay the difference.
My constituents have issues, and I was looking at your presentation, and you only do a background check on the adults. A lot of times, the kids are in trouble and that seems to be the problem with, with this program. Why wouldn't you do a background check on the kids?
Legally, we can't. We can only do what is considered an adult under state law, which is eighteen and over.
Okay. What's to stop them, the two adults, from renting out the rooms to gang-bangers or criminal people?
I wish there was some way to place that, Councilmember Vias, but I mean, we can't. What people do in their homes is not controllable by us. However, I will tell you, when we do inspections annually, we go to every single unit again and re-inspect. We look for things like that. Our inspectors are trained to look for, I mean, they know when they go out, how many people are occupying that house. They know how many children are in that unit. They are trained to look for not only to make sure that the unit meets housing quality standards, but everything in there is kosher, as much as we possibly can.
And also in the meeting, you, Ryan had brought up that he was upset that the people should go down to the Board of Supervisors and complain. And I think in the meeting that you stated that San Bernardino County is giving more benefits than LA County? Is that right? That we give more in benefits?
Actually, that was Frank Williams, the appointee to the board, who indicated that from a welfare standpoint, the number of dollars that are given to welfare recipients in San Bernardino County is higher than it is in Los Angeles County. He didn't elaborate. We don't know what that number is, but he indicated that that was the case. Do you know if that's the case, or?
I do not, Ryan. No. I'm not sure what the different rates are by jurisdiction.
I think it's been a pretty widely-reported fact that the incidence of public assistance is higher in San Bernardino County than probably most of the other counties in Southern California.
In terms of public assistance, I can only speak from a housing standpoint. LA City and LA County are probably six times larger and have that much more assistance than we provide. I mean, in total, for our organization, given the jurisdiction, being the largest county in the contiguous United States, we administer ten thousand units of affordable housing, approximately ten, eleven thousand. Given the amount of need in terms of our waiting list and so forth, that really isn't a lot. And now in Victorville, it's really only a small percentage based on population. It's only four percent, given the population in the city of Victorville.
I'm kind of curious. I think you answered a question, but it wasn't entirely clear. How do you determine the voucher amount? It's based on the size of the family and the size of the house that they need? Is that how the one, two, three, four bedrooms determine?
Yes. What you're referring to are called occupancy standards. And our policy with respect to occupancy standards is two per bedroom regardless of the sex and age of the children. The head of household, however, gets a bedroom of their own. So if you had a single parent and five children, they would get two, three bedrooms, four bedrooms, I'm sorry, four bedrooms.
Does the voucher amount vary depending on where the house is? In other words, rents may be higher in Redlands than they are in Atlanta. Do you adjust for that?
What we did, when we hired a third-party consultant to do a rent study for us, we ended up with nine submarkets in our county. So yes, there's, Redlands is in a different submarket than Apple Valley, Hesperia, Victorville. San Bernardino, the city of San Bernardino alone has three submarkets because the rents were that diverse in that city. So in total, we have nine. Prior to doing this rent study, we only had two. And if you go to what HUD dictates to be the fair market rents, they actually combine San Bernardino County and Riverside County as one metropolitan statistical area. So you can imagine that Temecula is very different than Rialto. And so we saw the ludicrousity of that. And because we have this flexibility that we can do things better, we did a rent study and we came up with nine submarkets.
Do you have any idea why the number in Victorville is so much higher than the other communities up here and the other communities in the county? Is that in the nature of our population somehow?
Based on
The people aren't moving here because the rents are cheaper.
I know.
Right?
I know. Based on my experience, after twenty-six years of doing this, families tend to go, number one, where their support systems are, meaning their family, community members, where they feel comfortable, and they go where it's affordable. And in this downturn particularly, there is a lot of units here that are for rent in various areas. It's not just Brentwood. And so there is that attraction to be able to rent a house where if they stayed in Redlands, they might only be able to rent an apartment. Which is another reason why these payment standards that we have put into effect are going to change that. We don't think it's appropriate. I mean, we certainly are not able to have choice and we don't want them to have flexibility. But at the same time, we don't want them to be overhoused and we don't necessarily think they should have a mansion. There needs to be some reasonableness within that, freedom of choice.
Some of the houses they can rent in Brentwood are much nicer houses for the money than what they could rent in Redlands. Probably.
I agree.
Would that be true?
I, you know, staff and I have driven Brentwood from one end to the other. We have looked at some of the Section 8 units that are out there. I have seen some of the neighborhoods and what people are perceiving are Section 8 clients. They're not. And really, it's, it's their freedom to be able to choose that. I can't deny them that. You know, by law, we're restricted from doing that. But like I say, our payment standards, we hope, will help adjust that.
Do you have any statistics on how long people, as a rule, or an average, stay in this program?
About seven years is the average based on our data.
Are there outer limits on the high end and
Oh, yes.
some for life?
Yes, there are some. But you have to remember, we also have some seniors and disabled individuals that have no needs. And this program is good for individuals that are on fixed incomes and have no means to work. Our philosophy, and particularly as a moving to work agency, is up and out. And we're trying everything that we possibly can to encourage our clients to do that. That means, you know, helping them with resources to become self-sufficient and find jobs. And we have a staff of five that are devoted to that.
Can a landlord decide to not rent to a person who is gonna give him a voucher? Do we have that legal right?
If you were to ask your housing, they would say no, because they have a voucher, you're not supposed to deny them. But a landlord does have the freedoms to who they can rent to. But yeah, legally, they're not supposed to deny them because they have a Section 8 voucher.
Who's in here holding my fire because I've really got a lot of problems? I've been sitting around this Housing Authority issues for many years on this council. Both, and you're the messenger, so I'm not firing at you. I'm firing at the program. Trust me, I am.
And I do understand that.
The state and the federal government has this benevolent attitude with the taxpayers' money of moving people into homes that they could not normally afford on their own. Many of those people justifiably ought to be in those neighborhoods. But there's also part of the program that you have clearly articulated. There's no protection to the property owners that are living within those communities and those neighborhoods when they're impacted by this program. The first priority goes to serving the person that is using the taxpayers' money to get into that home. And then when we ask, can we come to your authority, the state or the federal government, they kind of wash their hands of all thing, oh, no, no, we can't do any of that. We've got these rules that we're going to serve, but we're not going to police. Well, I think we're coming to a point, at least in this state, and I can't speak for any other state, when cities are beginning to push back irrespective of what the state legislature may want to do. And part of that pushback has got to be that, as you said, the person that owns a home and says, I want to put my home in the voucher system, whether it's Section 8 or this low and modern Housing Authority home, whatever it is, I want to put my home in there, then we, as a local community, ought to be able to come back and have that person as a business operator within our community and be holding them responsible. And we ought not to be running into interference from both the county and the state level as to our ability to police that when we have, whether it seems to be minor complaints, noise is a minor thing. There's a lot of disruption that is going on out in the neighborhoods, neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood. And they're living in these homes, and the property owner seems to be insulated. I, for one, hope that this council and many other councils in this county begin to identify the homes and demand from the state the identification of those homes when they move into that project. And then either the property owner is held responsible, or the property manager, it might be Blue Star or somebody else that happens to be managed, they will be held responsible for that property. And within a very short period of time, we ought to be able to turn that participant out of that home and out of that neighborhood from terrorizing people. I mean, I bet you everybody on this council receives monthly calls from people all over this town, running into the neighbor-from-hell that is on some kind of a taxpayer-subsidized program, and there's insulation to the property owners. Hopefully, we're beginning to break that down. We've just adopted one ordinance, but I think that that ordinance was just the beginning, quite frankly. I was the one that started the one rental business license only because I needed for us to have a handle on some way to get to those people. But what I would ask from you and your agencies on up is to be more of a supportive role. Don't say, oh, they don't want us to put these people in. No, that's not it at all. We want to protect the people that have their homes and the investments that they have there, hundreds of thousands of dollars in some cases. We want to be able to protect that. And we don't want you shining this off, the state and the federal feds, and saying, you can't approach these people. They're specially protected. We can't even tell you when they're in the program. Yes, you ought to be posting that up on the wall every month when the new people come in. If you're under the taxpayers' dime, then you'll be on a list. We're not stigmatizing you. We're just simply saying that our people would have a far more vested interest in that neighborhood than you who's living in there at half-price, one-third price, or in some cases, they pay virtually nothing. So that's my, I mean, I could go through a whole list of ways, but I mean, it's, the intent is honorable. I mean, my God, there's, people love to live in homes, but most of us, we go out there and we pay our 20% down. We have an economic interest in the viability, not of our property, but our neighborhood. And these people don't. They come in with zero investment in that neighborhood. And then when we get mad at them, good enough mad at them, and for some way or another, a few of them to get them out of the way, they just move on to another one, another area. And it didn't solve the problem because the next person comes in, they have zero vested interest in that real estate. So my concern is that, as good as the property is, we're going to begin to develop ordinances that are going to be able to hold the property owner accountable to the city, if that's what we have to do. And you're not going to hide behind the fact, oh, I put my house in the Section 8. Well, that's too bad. You're going to take it out of Section 8. You're a business, and by the way, we're going to pull your business license in this town. And now you can't do it in our town. And I don't know how that's going to bump into the state and federal. You're going to say, wait a minute, you can't do that. This property owner wants to put us in Section 8, and you, City of Victorville, you're going to say, no, we're not going to let you do that. Well, that's where it's going to wind up coming to loggerheads. And I think that's where the County Board of Supervisors is going to play a serious role in this process. We're going to all begin to push back, one by one and collectively, and then pretty soon, the county boards and supervisors in this state are going to have to respond to that pressure. So I think we're in a change mode right now. Maybe part of it was part of the economic downturn that has caused this moment in time, but it's a crisis moment. But every crisis, there's an opportunity. Every crisis, there's an opportunity. And right now, we've got a housing crisis that has lasted too long, and part of it is you're tying the hands of the cities. And we're going to start to push back now. And I'm hoping that this council has done part of that first step. There's going to be more to come. That's my frustration, if I conveyed that idea to you.
I understand your frustration, but two things I need to make clear. If you write to the state, they're not even going to, don't waste your ink, because they're really not part of it. There's state law that governs housing authorities, but they really have no oversight. The federal dollars that we spend and the rules we have to comply with most of the time, except for the flexibility we're producing, they're not the stick. So if you have complaints and you would like program changes, I encourage you to go to your congressmen and your senators and do that. The Housing Authority is here to be your partner. We are not here to tell cities what to do. We're not going to stop you. We're here really to tell you just how much that we can do in terms of helping you to ensure that your communities are safe and flourishing.
All right. Thank you, Susan. We appreciate you coming up here.
But let's be clear about one thing. The ordinances that we've adopted punish behavior. They don't punish any particular group or class or imagined or defined group of people. They punish behavior of loud disruptive parties and criminal behavior will always be punished. Does anybody anywhere have any facts, any real facts or statistics, real data about how much crime, or even the crime in Brentwood or anywhere else, is being committed by people in these voucher programs? Or is that just everybody's impression?
I think part of it is impression, and I'll tell you why. We get calls all of the time that come to us. The name, this Catherine that's up here, she's in the office next to me. She is going to get all of the calls, and I am going to screen them personally myself in terms of whether it's crime, whether it's noise, you know, how far we can go. Because I want to monitor the number of it. But our history is, when people call and tell us it's Section 8, at least 95% of the time, they're not on the program. So part of that really is a misperception, that because it's crime, because they have bad behavior, they're on Section 8. But I will, we're going to keep this going on a weekly, monthly basis. I am going to let Mayor McKecon and Councilwoman Vias know how many calls we've had and the types of calls, and how many were on Section 8 and how many were not. I can't violate someone's rights in terms of telling them who they are, but I can tell you how many we get and how many are actually on the program.
All right. Thank you, Susan. I appreciate you coming up here this evening and making that presentation. And we look forward to continuing to work with you on a go-forward basis regarding this issue. So thank you. All right. We'll now have the city clerk present the agenda to the council.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. Following are the revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. On the Southern California Logistics Airport Agenda Items Nine and Ten, there's a correction to the names that are listed in the staff report. Item number nine should be listed as Kwan. Item number 10, the name should be Lynn. On the Redevelopment Agency Agenda, the staff has requested that item number 12 be removed from the agenda at this time. On the City Council Agenda, Written Communications, Item Number 24, a letter has been submitted from the owner of Stauffer's Landscape, Inc., and that letter has been presented and is on the dais for the council's consideration. And those are all the revisions that I have.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move into public comment. The first card I have is Laura Avalos.
First off, I'd like to say my brother would have loved to attend the meeting, but due to all the issues in Brentwood, he feels he needs to stay at home to watch the house. This past Saturday, we had an incident where seven males were running down the street, jumping in and out of backyards to avoid police from something that happened at a party a couple streets down. Come to find out, two or three of the suspects lived on our street. I would love to give our police department kudos for apprehending eight of the nine suspects, but I don't feel full praises deserved. Yes, they were tough and did make arrests. However, my neighbor was on the phone with dispatch for 22 minutes waiting for them to arrive. Mind you, someone was injured at the party, and these people were armed with pipes, and they were jumping in and out of houses. Fortunately, the suspects were still in the area. I'm also confused as to why a woman who was handcuffed was let go minutes later after assaulting an officer. And we heard the officer say, you kicked me. You assaulted me. And then he took the cuffs off and let her go. Last time I heard, you should go to jail for assaulting an officer. I'm also disappointed that the last suspect was not caught even after the officers were told which house he ran into. But I guess it doesn't matter since all the suspects were released hours later. We have filed for extra patrol. At least four of the six years we have lived in the area, and I can honestly say I've seen officers maybe once, maybe twice a month patrol. I understand the department is understaffed, but issues continue and situations get worse. It is coming to the point where residents are going to take matters into their own hands. And I'm terrified that that day is coming soon. I've heard from several of my neighbors saying, we're going to handle it ourselves. They don't want to come out. We're going to take care of ourselves. My dad's one of them, and I'm terrified that he's going to do something because of all the problems we've been having. Everyone says, get neighborhood watch. But what good is it when we're watching and we call the police and nothing's done? I'll be moving next month because honestly, you couldn't pay me to live in this city any longer. And the sad thing is, I'm leaving my parents behind because they're homeowners, and they can't leave. But I'm sure if it was your parents living in this situation, something would be done. You know, I don't, I do promise, though, if things, attempts aren't made to change things, I will get together with all the residents of Brentwood and see about filing a lawsuit against the City of Victorville for negligence. Thank you.
David Mueller.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Dave Mueller. I'm with HighDesertPolitics.org. I want to change subjects a little bit. I know that Brentwood issue is a huge issue, but I know that basically you can't do much about it because it's a federal law. I wanted to speak to you about the closed session tonight. There was, you already announced out that there was a vote three to one, but I brought this up at the last meeting. Section 54956.9C, Mr. D. Mortnowsky undoubtedly knows that what the C stands for is the receipt of a claim pursuant to the Tort Claims Act or some other written communication from a potential plaintiff threatening litigation. Which claim or communication shall be available for public inspection pursuant to Section 54957.5. That's the entire law. And I've been asking this council for a long time. I asked the same of the council in Apple Valley when they tried to do this. The public has a right to know who the plaintiff is, obviously you're the defendant, and what it's about. Now, the reason the public is just now finding out about the claim by the Treasury Department is that this legislative body is hiding from the public these various occurrences in closed sessions. The first demand payment from the Treasury Department having been made in July of 2007 by the Defense Contract Audit Agency for overpayments that occurred from 1994 to 1998, and the public's just now finding out about this. The reason they're not finding out is because, just like tonight, who's the plaintiff on these three issues that involve SCLAA, the RDA, and the city council? I'm going to file a public records request if I have to to get that, but I shouldn't have to do that. Should be, plaintiffs should be listed in what the issue is. And of course, you're entitled to attorney-client privilege to discuss how you're going to resolve that. But the public should know what the issue is. And if they know that, they would have known the Department of the Treasury was demanding that you pay them some money tonight. And the public has a right to know these things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Donna Saldana?
Good evening. Thank you for saying my last name correctly. My name is Donna. My husband and I purchased a home in the Los Haciendas, KB, community here in Victorville in 2006. My husband and I thinking it would be a safe place to raise our children while he deployed. However, my daughter had to be taken out of Victorville High School due to the violence of racial wars, children with no respect for others and teachers, and transferred to the only best school up here, which would be Excelsior Charter School. My daughter having to take the public bus to get to that school because it's so far away, she was approached by four thug men and almost kidnapped. Luckily, she was able to get away. Every time we leave our homes, we see on the streets, these thugs roam around like they own the streets. They do as they please because we don't have enough force to clean up these streets. We are hard-working citizens that are complying to our homes. We have more than enough Section 8. We have more than enough Section Eight squatters. It's a new term that I just learned about. Leeches that dwell in Victorville. We need help. We need more deputies on the street patrolling, not less. About six months ago, we had a Section Eight family move in, as well as squatters. Both homes joined forces and took over our neighborhood. Our children that we bought these homes for, to give them a nice neighborhood to grow up, are confined to their backyards and the inside of their homes. I felt at the time that due to the destruction and no help from the city, we thought we should move. These Section Eight residents and squatters have caused so much high stress by throwing rocks at our cars, vandalizing our property, breaking into the vacant homes, cussing at us, blasting their vulgar music, drive-by shootings, and throwing trash on our yards, that it was all hopeless. We called the Shards Department almost on a daily basis, but nothing was done at the time. I tried selling my beautiful home that my husband and I worked so hard to keep. I'd rather move to a city that cares about their hard-working, tax-paying citizens. But because of the economy, I can't sell my home. So I'm stuck in this home, and so now I'm here to fight. I'll do whatever it takes to make sure that my neighborhood and other neighborhoods like Brentwood are protected. It's not fair. You know, we work hard. I work eleven hours a day. My husband is serving his country, and you've got Section Eight people that get vouchers, that get to move in a house that I paid over $400,000 for, and they get to live next door to me, and they get to take over the neighborhood. I feel like quitting my job, getting our welfare, and maybe I can get a voucher, and I can move right back into my house for free. There's no point. We need help. We need more deputies on the street, and we need code enforcement to have more authority to find these people. The landlords that are running to these Section Eight, these squatters. It took six months to get these people that trespassed in a $500,000 home that is completely destroyed. It's not even livable conditions anymore. This is two houses from my house. I wasn't even able to sit in my backyard and enjoy my $25,000 worth of landscaping. I can't sit in... And I can't even sit in my front yard, which I can go more figures, okay? This is all the money I have invested into my home, and I can't enjoy it. My son cannot ride his bike. My neighbor's kids are not allowed to go out front anymore. What are you guys going to do? You guys have been elected to help us, citizens that are paying our taxes. We need you guys to help us. Get these deputies, get more deputies on the streets, start patrolling. Luckily, a deputy, Lozano, has... He's our blessing. He helped remove these squatters from this home, and now we're working on the Section Eight house. We want our neighborhood back. We started Neighborhood Watch, which has helped tremendously because we all unified as a neighborhood. But it's... We need your guys' help. We need policy enforced. Code enforcement needs to only give one chance to the homeowner. That's all it takes to clean up their property. It doesn't take three chances. And as far as each chance, they get ten days each time. This is what code enforcement tell me. And as far as squatters, as long as they open three utilities, they've established residency in any home they choose. Where's our help? We need you guys to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Pusyn Wells.
I'm wearing my death guard here for the racquetball closing at Pebble Beach Park.
She lifts the microphone up. We can't hear you.
Sorry. Pebble Beach Park has been around for a number of years. I've been playing racquetball there for twenty-two years. Unfortunately, in those twenty-two years, we have the same carpeting. The place has not been kept up, and it's in pretty bad shape. I would like to thank Mr. Vanderloop and his group for the work that he's done to keep West Winds open, and I would like to work towards that, but I'm only one person, and I need help. If you have names of business leaders who could help keep the pool open and maybe reopen the racquetball, I would be willing to work towards those ends. I feel that there's a lot of fancy footwork going on here, misinformation, lack of information, lack of transparency on the part of the council and the Parks and Recreation. When I was first told the pool was closing, I called the Department of Parks and Recreation to check that out. I was told that time that, from the council, was requested budget cuts, and at that time, I was told that the closing of the pool was permanent. Now, if you've reversed it since then, then that's great. All I can say is, oh, I guess that must have been a mistake, and no one said it was a seasonal closing. After that hearing that it was a permanent closing, I wrote an article to the newspaper about the permanent closing, and they always check their facts with the council or the Parks and Recreation. The article stood about a permanent closing. It was never corrected or refuted by any of you that the closing was seasonal. Oh, I guess you forgot to tell them again it was a seasonal closing. Then the park employees told me over and over again that the pool would be closing and the racquetball would be closing. There were signs posted, flyers sent out, but I guess they too were mistaken, and oh, I guess it was just a seasonal closing. The lifeguards were told that the positions would not be there next year, and they should look for another position in the spring. Well, I guess their information was incorrect also, and I guess it was just a seasonal closing. Although I have been told that there's no money set aside for the reopening of the pool, but there is money to keep it maintained, I guess, again, my information is correct, and this is just a seasonal closing. My question to you, if this is really just a seasonal closing like normal, can you give me a date in the spring when the pool will reopen? Also, I was wondering, why do we have people playing tennis every week, all the time, and they don't get charged to play tennis? I'm trying to think outside the box. I think it's wonderful that Mr. Vanderloop and his group has come up with ideas, but is there any responsibility for the council members or the Parks and Recreation to think outside the box, or is it only for the citizens to come up with these ideas? I'm willing, and a lot of us are willing, to volunteer our time and our efforts. I have not seen many flyers or many park programs in the last few years for that park to keep the park opening and bring more revenue in. And like Ms. Vellis said, I think you need to look at some successful Parks and Recreation areas to see what you can do to think outside the box to keep the pool opening. I'll be watching for that opening in the spring of the Pebble Beach Doris Davies Park. And Mayor, I read on the Internet that you were a friend of Doris Davies, and I think that she would be ashamed of all of you, of what's been going on. And I hope that you will contact me with some names of business leaders. I will go and talk to every one of them that you give me to try and get this park to stay open, the pool and the racquetball courts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Halton.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just heard from my neighbor Donna. I live right across from her. We've had six months of hell with these people that moved in. We own a $500,000 home. I have four children. My daughter does not go to public school due to these people that go to this school that have no respect for people. She's also going to Excelsior. She doesn't take the public bus because I'm afraid of something happening to her. I have to make that thirty-minute drive every morning. She has to be there at 7:30 every morning. Mayor, you were at my other kid's school today, Waki. My kids go to that school also, Challenger. Go to school. Father's Day weekend, we had a loud party on our street. We had these people from Section Eight that live at home. They had a party. People came, I don't know where they came from. We had a shooting. Father's Day weekend, I had family at my house, had my nephew and niece at my house, my kids at my house. We had a shooting. Call the police department. One officer showed up, got out of his car, asked him if everything was okay, got in his car and left. I urge you to hire more police officers for these communities where we pay a lot of money for our homes. We can't get up and leave and go somewhere else. We came here for the purpose to raise our children, hoping it would be a good community to raise our children. I just urge you to hire more police officers to patrol these streets. My daughter's dream is to be a deputy, and I hope she is one of these days. But I urge you, people, please hire more police officers. We need them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of the cards that I have for public comment. I do have some other cards on items that are coming up on our agenda. We'll move into our other agenda items. Library Board of Trustees, there's no items for us to discuss this evening. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, again, no items. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Agenda Item Number Eight, we have a request to ratify approval of the payment agreement with the U.S. Department of the Treasury for an additional appropriation in amount of $497,000.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I have a question.
Yes.
How... Can... Doug, can you explain how this could go on for so long with so many penalties before it's brought to the council?
Actually, I cannot. Keith may have a little bit more information than I. A lot of this occurred before Keith and I were with the city. I am aware that it happened over the time period of 1994 through 98. Mr. Cox asked Mr. Metzler to take this on, I believe it was last summer, about a year ago, during that time that he's had it. He's actually negotiated a reduction in the principal amount and also a reduction in the penalties and interest. Keith, if you could add any color to that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. As much as I think I can add as color is, this really hadn't been brought to the council's level because it was largely, at least in my review of the history and my understanding of the history, was an administrative dispute. And it was a dispute really over the actual accounting of expenses, and the dispute really dates back to the late 1990s. And as much as I can explain it as being an administrative dispute, I do know that previous administrations had actually made attempts working with the Air Force because that's how this dispute and claim actually originated. There was reconciliation efforts, you know, just amongst our staff and theirs in terms of trying to justify certain expenditures. Unfortunately, because the matter drug on for so long, it seemed to be proving more and more difficult to actually true up a lot of the expenses. The nature of this claim has to do with maintenance-related costs of infrastructure at George Air Force Base before it had transferred. And to generally characterize the type of dispute that this involves, the Air Force advanced monies to maintain things like water systems, electrical systems, things of that nature that had not been yet transferred to the Air Force or to the local jurisdiction. And we used city employees, contract employees. We were actually functioning as a treasurer veda at the time. So we were actually doing the work and expecting to get repaid. Really, the focus of this dispute had a lot to do with having done work that didn't go through the appropriate approval process. Basically, there was expenses incurred to where we did not get advanced approvals from the Air Force. Ironically, in our review of the history and all of the documentation that we could get our hands on, we were able to at least demonstrate that a lot of the expenses that was the subject of this dispute were similar in nature to items that had been previously approved by the Air Force. So really, it seemed to be heavily administrative, probably difference of opinion, difference of agreement amongst staffs. So we never really, I believe, felt that it was going to rise to this level, and of course, it did. My office did get to inherit this, and as much as we did, we attempted to resolve it the best that we could without creating any future or any additional harm.
How long have you and Doug been with the city?
I've been with the city, working in City Hall, since 1996.
And I've been with the city since 2002.
In private sector, heads would roll, but we just pay the bill on taxpayer dollars.
My best guess is that the folks that were negotiating this prior to Mr. Metzler are no longer with the city at this point, so their heads aren't here to roll.
My chronology actually does, in fact, verify that. You know, I have looked at the written correspondence, and every individual that had dealt with this, Mr. Robertson is correct, is no longer here. This literally became a kick-the-can-down-the-road kind of scenario. I think that's at least how we're characterizing in my office. Unfortunately, the can landed on my desk and that of Mr. Robertson.
Is there any other losses besides the $497?
No, this is...
Does it have any lost rent or anything like that?
This is the total settlement related to this item.
They're all paid up on their rent?
The military is two months behind on the particular contract that's subject to this, but typically, the Air Force runs quarterly behind, so we're generally current with them, but they've been paying their bills.
So they will pay that?
Say that again.
So they will pay that rent?
I do expect that they will continue to pay the rent as required to under the contract we have with them.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we have a motion.
Councilmember Vias, thank you very much. The motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
As Agenda Items Nine, Ten, and Eleven all deal with our EB-5 program and refunding loans, can I take those all at the same time? City turn?
Please.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Nine is a request to approve addendum number one to promissory note dated November 6, 2009 to VRC-1 EB-5 Program Quan in the amount of $500,000. Agenda Item Number Ten is a request to approve addendum number one to promissory note dated January 22, 2010 to VRC-1 EB-5 Program Lynn in the amount of $500,000. And Eleven is a request to approve addendum number three to promissory note dated July 28, 2010 to VRC-1 EB-5 Program De Trong in the amount of $500,000.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
All right. Under the Redevelopment Agency, Agenda Item Number Twelve has been requested for removal. Under the Joint Powers Financing Authority, we have no items at time of posting. Victorville Water District, we do have consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
Under the City Council, Agenda Item Number Fourteen is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the notice of intent to adopt and approve the mitigated negative declaration for Valley Center Drive Phase Two. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council for decision.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
Agenda Item Number Fifteen is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against introducing the Social Host Accountability Ordinance as set forth in Propose Ordinance Number the Social Host Accountability Ordinance as set forth in proposed ordinance number 2280. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 15. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? If you could come forward to the microphone, I'll have to have you ask the council at this point.
Evening, council. What exactly does that, does that mean to Social Host Accountability? I read it and I don't get it. So, if you can just clarify that so I can-
Okay. If either our city attorney or-
Or somebody else has to say it?
Well, we're gonna have them explain the legalese to you.
Essentially, it's an ordinance to allow for, uh, the recoupment of costs when we have to go down and shut, shut down a loud and unruly party.
Oh, okay.
So it holds the property owner who is throwing a party that's serving alcohol to minors accountable.
Oh, okay. All right. That's, and, um, I had a public comment card, but I didn't know what, uh, agenda item I could speak on. I wanted to, uh, ask a couple of questions about, um, like, I didn't know that you guys are gonna send out bids, right, for the bridge on Miss Wally? Or something like that? Does the city do that?
No, that is actually handled by San Bernardino Associated Governments at this point. We handed that project over to them.
Oh, okay. All right. I guess that was it then.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Agenda Item Number 15? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the city council and have the city clerk read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Victorville adding Chapter 13.100 to the Victorville Municipal Code titled Social Host Accountability Ordinance. There's a motion to waive further reading and introduce ordinance number 2280, motion made by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
Agenda Item Number 16 is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the proposed zone change PLN 11-00008 as set forth in introduced in proposed ordinance number 2281. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 16. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time? I do have one card, Patricia Green. Anyone else wishing to address the council on Agenda Item Number 16? All right. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council.
And I'll read the ordinance, Mayor McEckern. Ordinance number 2281, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving zone change PLN 11-00008 to reclassify property from C2 general commercial to C1 neighborhood commercial, Ramona Office Property LLC.
Move introduction and waive further reading. Do I have to say that anymore? Or do we?
I can say that for you, if you'd like. Motion is made by Councilmember Rothschild to waive further reading and introduce the ordinance, motion second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
Agenda Item Number 17 is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against general plan amendment and zone change DEV 11-00006 as set forth in resolution number 11-045 and introduced in ordinance number 2282. We'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 17. I do have a card, Rob Kerr.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm the representative of the owners of the Center Point Industrial Project that this zone change affects. I'm here just to say that we are all in support of this proposed zone change. And I did want to bring to the council's attention that when I brought this to staff's attention, being Mr. Webb, Mr. Boettler, and their staff, they took it very seriously. They understood what I was getting at. They worked real closely, and I was very happy to see that we could find these accommodations to this proposal, which are gonna benefit these properties and the future businesses that will occupy these properties. So with that, I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kerr?
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address this on Agenda Item Number 17? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, have our city clerk read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving zone change DEV 11-00006 to reclassify property from CM Commercial Manufacturing to IPD Industrial Park District, City of Victorville. Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild, to adopt the resolution and wa, introduce and waive further reading of ordinance number 2282. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
Agenda Item Number 18, a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against amendment DEV 11-00004, specific plan amendment DEV 11-00005, and adoption of City Council Policy Number CP-11-05 regarding interim uses, uh, use permits, which are set forth with introduction of ordinances 2283 and 2284. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 18. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and have our city clerk read the ordinances.
Ordinance number 2283, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving amendment DEV 11-00004, an amendment to Title 16 of the Municipal Code to allow interim use permits for any non-permitted use in any zone, City of Victorville. Ordinance number 2284, an ordinance of the City of Victorville for specific plan amendment DEV 11-00005, a proposed 11th amendment to the Old Town Specific Plan, Specific Plan 195, to allow interim use permits for any non-permitted use in any district. Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild, to waive further reading and introduce the ordinances.
And what about the policy CP 1105?
I was going to go to that item next to have you take a separate vote on that one. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent. Now for a vote on the council policy CP 1105. Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull 19A.
Okay, we'll pull that one, but I'll entertain a motion on the rest of the consent.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
Okay, at this time, we'll hear 19A, Councilmember Vias.
I'd like to point out that if we wanna save money so we can keep our parks open and, um, uh, hire more police, we need to do an RFP for a full-service law firm. Um, the attorney charged us, once again, $116,000.
Move, are we on? Okay. Move for approval.
Uh, the motion is made by Councilmember Kennedy, seconded by Councilmember Rothschild to approve the commercial demand schedule. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
All right. We've dealt with Agenda Item Number 20, so we'll move to Agenda Item Number 21. This is a request to receive and file the quarterly financial status report as of June 30, 2011. I do have a one card on this, Mr. Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Again, my name's Dave Mueller, I'm with HyDesertPolitics.org. In regards to this issue, Mr. Robertson says in this report that revenues are down, but does not provide a current balance, which should be the point of a, of a financial report, quarterly financial report. He provides graphs, but that's not an accurate, you know, amount of money. You can guesstimate what it is, but you don't know exactly what your revenues are right now, apparently. He, he then lists the expenditures in the report as a percentage of budget. The city attorney expenditure is not close to reality. Depending on how the figures are totaled, I found the city attorney to be at 857% of budget, not 186%. And I'm, I'm gonna explain that to you. Uh, the note on page 276 of Mr. Robertson's report says that invoices have been received and paid through February. Invoices from March through June will be billed back to the department prior to year end closing. Well, the year is closed. Your fiscal year ended in June. And the first five demand, commercial demand or commercial warrants demands that were just up there, one of which Ms. Vias was, was mentioning, totals $522,997.55 in attorney's services. Um, the, so, so if you, um, I gave, excuse me, I gave this council the actual charges from Mr. D. Bortnowsky, uh, at the last meeting, which are $1,114,080 for the year. And all you have to do, again, I'll tell the public, go to the commercial warrants, go back through the, the payments, and total them up. That's what it is. If you combine his charges, which is over a million dollars, with the other legal services the City of Victorville has paid, which is $3,178,686.11, legal services are 857% over budget. Where's that money coming from? If it's not, if his budget was $500,894, it's gotta come somewhere, general fund? But it is, should be accounted to legal services because it has something to do with, with, with legal, legal help, even if Mr. D. Bortnowsky didn't, uh, didn't participate in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was the only card I had on that item.
And I'd like to say that, um, on these quarterly financial status reports, I have requested numerous times in writing, as well as verbally here on this dais, that we need cash flow numbers, we need balances. The information provided in these reports are not sufficient to make sound financial decisions. And as you can see, this council is not.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 22 is a request to adopt resolution number 11-046 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California Certifying the City of Victorville 2010 Power Source Disclosure Program in a Report and Power Content Label."
I'd just make a comment on this item. It's just, it is a document that is demanded by the state, but it's one of these documents that also reflects a policy of this state, the global warming aspect, uh, we're to meet 33% of our, um, yeah, 33% of our electrical input by 2020. There's no way this state's ever gonna reach that standard of renewables. The only renewable that counts is nuclear. Everything else is paid for by the taxpayers. There is not one single renewable, not solar, wind, any of them, that pay for themselves when you pencil it out. So, anyway, we have to adopt that report. We have to work towards that standard. We do that. We have our own energies here. But there is an article in today's Daily Press, read the Steve Williams article on the editorial page today, uh, very good, again, debunking the human cause of global warming. Uh, there are very respectable scientists and, uh, that have, pointing to the fact that volcanoes, unusual, uh, weather patterns, as well as the, um, solar flares, cause far more global adjustment, if you will, than anything the humans have done on this planet in the history of mankind. More and more of those responsible scientists are coming around, uh, the ones that, some of the Point people that were leading it with the United Nations are in this report that Mr. Williams is mentioning in today's article. Again, I think the pressure's gonna build that, uh, this type of CO2 emission issue is costing you and me on a daily, on a monthly basis, hundreds of dollars in your home, thousands of dollars in the, in the business community. This city has purchased equipment on, uh, adjustments to our equipment to meet those CO2 standards that have nothing to do with any responsible act of government. And yet, here we are doing it. Unless we sit here and remind you of it time and time again, we tend to forget all that cost of government built into these regulations that have nothing, nothing to do with the preserving of humanity, the environment, or anything else. Has everything to do with the, uh, social movement that is going on in this, on this planet here to take wealth from the industrial nations and move it to the poor nations. That is the big picture. When you kind of put that in the back of your mind as you're reading, why are people doing all that stuff? That's part of it. Read Steve Williams's article today in the Daily, in the Daily Press today, a very good one. Oh, and I'm voting yes.
There's a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor McEckern. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
Agenda Item Number 23 is a request to adopt resolution number 11-047 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, State of California Adopting the Measure-I Five-Year Capital Improvement Program."
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
Um, Agenda Items Number 24 and 25, I'm gonna recuse myself on, and let me get into the reasons why. 24, I received an email this morning accusing me of somehow being involved in trying to cause stoppers linescaping to do business with my firm, uh, which I have never done. I've never talked to them. I don't know who they are. But for whatever reason, people are accusing me of that. But I can assure you that I've never done that. However, uh, it would appear that there would be some sort of bias on my part because I didn't get their insurance, that I would vote against them. So, I, for all kinds of reasons, I've been advised that I should just not even vote on, on their contract, even though I really feel I have absolutely no conflict on that one. On 25, Assistant City Manager's Contract, as stated previously, Keith Metzler and I have been friends for several years, and for that reason, I will abstain. So, I will ask, although our Mayor Protem is not here tonight, I'll ask, uh, the most recent mayor that is seated here, Mike Rothschild, to handle both these items.
Agenda Item Number Four, Request for Reviewing of the Contract. We did bring it up, and we did ask, with the testimony that was there, and myself included, we needed a bit more information. In the last month, we have certainly gotten that. The report from staff with the history of the bidding process has been explained in documentations to us. I think it's a very good system and was well-handled. In addition to that, we received a letter from, today, from Stafford's company, and in that letter, it clearly indicates, uh, they have a very strong presence in this valley, both on a personal level and a business level. They are not a down-the-hill business at all. They've won the contest in terms of the bids, and, uh, I'm comfortable at this point with it, so I'll ask the rest of the council what their comments are.
We have a public comment card from Dave Mueller.
Oh, 25.
Yeah, we're on 24 right now. Councilmember?
Yes. Um, the only thing that, after receiving all the information, um, that still bothers me about this, this item is that we're not putting more emphasis towards, uh, local businesses. We're only asking for 5%, but, you know, that- We're only asking for five percent, but, you know, that's, you know, a day late and a dollar short, because this RFP already went out. So, it was, you know, already done, and that was the criteria, so maybe we can change that in the future. But other than that, I, I don't have any other issues with this.
Kennedy?
I thought the owner's letter was interesting. Just for your information, he lives in the high desert, um, has, raises family in the high desert, employed, has employed over a hundred and fifty residents from the high desert, uh, in the time he's been in business for twenty-one years. My main concern when we heard the presentation at the last meeting was the claim by the folks who are not here tonight, who also bid on the contract, that the people who were evaluating the RFPs weren't competent, they weren't knowledgeable, they didn't know anything. Everything worked fine when it was in Parks and Rec, but when it moved to Public, uh, Public Works, uh, the people there just didn't know anything. And I made an inquiry about that, and what actually happened is that when that department was moved, uh, when the responsibility was moved to Public Works, that entire department and all those staff were moved to Public Works as well. So, the people who were doing the evaluations when it was in Parks and Rec were the same people who were doing the evaluations when it was in Public Works. So, that, that entire argument seemed to make no sense. Uh, so I'm confident that the proposal was considered carefully, properly, and I'm prepared to vote.
Yes. And we have no other comments from the audience? Then I'll entertain the motion. We've got a motion.
Motion by council member Kennedy, seconded by council member Rothschild. Motion carries with mayor McEckern and mayor Protem Cabralis absent.
And then moving on to agenda item number twenty-five now, um, a request for Assistant City Manager's contract. We've already technically approved this thing, but there are some cleanup language, I understand, that's why it's back on the agenda, so, uh, we do have a comment card here. Mr. Mueller?
Again, good evening, council. Um, I know everybody's wondering why I come to these meetings. I attend a lot of meetings in different areas of the high desert, and, um, I think it's important to bring about some perspective from, from my point of view, anyway, on this contract, even though I don't live in this city. Mr. Metzler just got a sweet deal from Mr. Robertson, is the way I look at this. His contract states that it's for three years with automatic two-year extensions, unless Mr. Robertson, the city manager, gives him written notice at least six months prior to the expiration of his current contract, that his agreement will be terminated. I'd like to ask the council, what happens if, if he screws up really badly five months before renewal? According to the contract, Victorville residents are protected by an at-will policy towards termination. Most people that live out in the real world, and I call the real world the private sector because government is so completely out of touch with the real world, that you have city managers that basically call the shots for the councils now, and have authority to spend whatever they want, within budget limits, but, I mean, they, they have a lot of power. You, the councils throughout this country are basically just rubber stamps. You would think with an at-will policy, you'd be able to terminate somebody if they're not doing a good job, but you don't get to determine that, the city manager does. I've already given at least one example of how he could beat that, Mr. Metzler. Let's say five months prior to renewal, he decides that he's, or he does something that he screws up. Well, the contract says six months, and, uh, since the, uh, Mr. Robertson didn't, didn't give him notice he was gonna terminate him with six months, he's off the hook. You can terminate Mr. Metzler with or without cause, but if you do, you have to pay him to do nothing for a year while he seeks other employment. Only the cit- city manager can terminate his contract. The people do have an out, though, under section three-point-three-C. That's, that covers fraud. Did you see?
Maybe, yeah, thirty seconds.
Did you see how Mr. Metzler's performance will be evaluated? I'm asking the council this, because you've already voted and approved this contract. His performance is based on, once he and the city managers sit down and discuss what the parameters are gonna be, that is a sweet deal, 'cause I never get that kind of a deal in the public sector. What did Mr. Metzler do?
Mr. Mueller, your time is up.
Just one last sentence.
No, your time is up.
He was a management analyst.
Will you sit down now, or I'll have you squirted out? That's the only comment card I have. Is there anybody else, please, wishing to comment? Okay, bring it back to the council.
Uh, not to mention, everything that Mueller said I agree with. I find it unbelievable that, um, in this day and age, this, this individual, or this, this contract would even be offered in this economy, especially when you just saw what happened with the four-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand dollars with the Air Force, SCLA, VIDA, it's all being mismanaged. These managers have been here, and they make the recommendations to the council, and the council approves those recommendations. As you can see, there's many yes-men here. So, whose fault is it that the city is, is being destroyed and is just a mess? Is it management that's making the recommendations to the council? Well, the buck stops here, it's the council that approves it. But when you have management that is incompetent, and then instead of getting fired for incompetent things that they do, we reward them and we promote them, and we just appoint them, we don't even open it up to the community, to the public. We're not even equal opportunity employer. We just appoint people. And that's the big problem that I have with this. Doug Robertson was just given the appointment, it didn't go open to the public, we don't get any new blood, and it's just the same old, same old, over and over again. It's, it's horrible.
To Kennedy?
Well, let's be clear, there's only one person, one person on this council who believes that the management of City Hall is incompetent, that Doug Robertson was not the best choice, and that Keith Metzler is not the best choice to back him up. Problem with the IRS, unfortunate problem, dates back to nineteen ninety-four and later, and it was fumbled. Hard to blame the guy who steps in and picks up the can when it's kicked onto his desk. Keith's done a wonderful job at the, at the base. If you look at the performance that we've seen at SCLA, the development, uh, the, the financial investment that's been made in this community, as a, directly as a result of his efforts, uh, we're lucky to have him. So, I'm absolutely comfortable with this contract.
I too would reiterate the fact that, uh, both Mr. Robertson and Mr. Metzler are excellent employees, uh, we're lucky to have them, uh, the quality of performance is beyond question, but there is one simple fact, and that is that Mr. Robertson is the only one that works for this council. Everybody else in this city works for the city manager. So, uh, we have agreed as a council majority vote on this, that allow the city manager to execute a special contract for the Assistant City Manager position, and in fact, it's a brand-new position in, in terms of the definition, the way we've scoped it in, uh, and so we will look through, at the next couple of years of this thing, and see if there's any adjustments to be made to it or anything else. But nevertheless, that individual works for the city manager, not the city council. So, we have approved the, uh, basic format of the contract and the language, uh, and that was a majority vote, and now we're down to just, uh, approving some of the finer points in the contract at this time. So, I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Kennedy, and I'll second it.
Council member Ken, or, excuse me, council member Rothschild, since you're running the meeting at this point, can I clarify a couple of items that were misstatements by Mr. Mueller? Number one, uh, section three-point-three, which you referenced, starts off saying, "In the event employee and this agreement are terminated for cause, employee shall not," I'll repeat, "shall not be entitled to any severance pay. Termination for cause is defined as follows: A, willful breach of this con, this, uh, agreement; B, habitual neglect of duties required to be performed under this agreement; C, any acts of dishonesty, misrepresentation, or moral obliteritude; D, convictions of fraud; and E, refusal or failure to act in accordance with any lawful directive or order of the city manager." So, this is not, uh, a case where if something wrong is done, that this individual will be, could be, would be terminated and get paid regardless. I would also like to point out a couple of items, uh, that I think is of interest to the public that they may not know. Uh, and we work as a team here, uh, and I do not want to give Keith Metzler credit individually for any of the awards that his organization have received, but I think it's important that the public and the council members know that, uh, in two thousand and two, uh, Mr. Metzler and his team won a statewide award, grand prize award, for Award of Excellence from CAL-ED, which is the statewide Association of Economic Development Agencies, uh, for, uh, a promotions award for their World of Opportunity launch. In two thousand and five, he won, and they won, a CAL-ED Award of Excellence, uh, for, uh, the partnership at the Foxborough Industrial Park. That's not the failed power plant, that's for bringing all of the other businesses there, although the power plant was a, a piece of that. Uh, in two thousand and six, won another CAL-ED Award of Excellence for Promotions for VIDA Regional Marketing Program. Uh, and then in two thousand and eleven, just this year, uh, you saw him presenting to the city council, uh, California Redevelopment Association Award of Excellence, uh, for Commercial and Industrial Development, specifically the Dr. Pepper Snapple Group, uh, and Industrial Wastewater Treatment Facility, uh, which is a very successful project, even though you may not, uh, have read that. Um, another item that Mr. Metzler was asked to take on for no additional pay approximately two years ago was the airport. Uh, for my entire career here and his entire career here, up until the point that he took it over, the airport ran at a loss of well over a million dollars, probably about a million and a half dollars every year, uh, year after year after year. In Mr. Metzler's first year overseeing that operation, he essentially got it to a break-even point, and this year, it's actually scheduled to bring in approximately nine-hundred-thousand dollars in revenue over expenditures. Uh, Mr. Metzler has done an excellent job, and I'm very proud to have him as a key member of my executive team.
Too bad all those awards don't pay the bills, like public safety, and that you didn't mention the five-hundred-thousand that have been misappropriated over the number of years.
Nobody's misappropriated anything. Okay, we've taken the vote?
There's a motion by council member Kennedy, seconded by council member Rothschild. Motion carries with mayor McEckern and mayor Protem Cabralis absent, and council member
Agenda item number twenty-six is the mayor's review and approval of all city council agenda items.
I don't understand what this is even doing on the agenda. You do that anyway, that's what we normally do, is, uh, there's, there's nothing new here that we don't already do. What are we doing? A policy that already exists.
Does the mayor currently approve the city, the council agenda?
No, my signature's placed on it for the purpose of public noticing, but, uh, I don't actually currently review, and maybe the city clerk can get into how the agenda's developed and what it goes through. Um, I could go either way on this, it doesn't matter.
Well, I think I, I know enough about how the agenda's developed to make this statement. I am just completely opposed to this. There are a number of items that go on this agenda by law, by state law, by city ordinance. No mayor should have the authority to approve, or more likely, disapprove something that that mayor doesn't wanna see on the agenda. That's the risk. I see absolutely no benefit having the mayor approve what must be there, and the things that are discretionary are there because we, as a group, have developed consensus that we want them there. I see absolutely no reason to give the mayor that kind of authority. I'm concerned that he would disapprove something.
Um, no, actually, what I suggested was that the mayor review the agenda to ensure that the council members get their items on the agenda, because there seems to be a problem with my items not making the agenda, even though the council approved it. So, when I called Ryan and asked him, he said that he doesn't, he doesn't review it for that, and I said, "Well, maybe if you reviewed it, there'd be an extra set of eyes that could catch any mistakes." Not so that he can disapprove anything, just make sure that our items get on there.
I don't have any problem with that. It's the approval part I would object to.
Well, it, maybe, maybe we, in order to get this council on the same page, if, if it's just appropriate that I review it, but it's not my discretion for approval, that way, if I see something that's missing, I can bring it to staff's attention, uh, maybe that's appropriate. Um, it, it hasn't been the practice, at least that I'm aware of, uh, no one's ever asked me to review agenda, uh, but I'm more than willing to do so if, if that's the council's pleasure, so, um, I'm really looking for the council's direction on this.
I think it's a waste of time, it's, you're, it's exactly what you do now. I've sat in that seat twice myself, so there's nothing new here to do. I'm opposed to the policy.
Steph would like a little bit of clarification on what items that have been approved by the council haven't made it to the agenda.
Parks and Recs.
What?
Parks and Recs.
If you're referring to the last meeting, um, what happened in that instance was, I volunteered to put an item on the agenda as an interim update, knowing that we were preparing a full update on the West Winds Activity Center. This is, I explained it at the last meeting, I'll explain it again, uh, tonight, uh, that we made a mistake and didn't put that item on the agenda. Uh, that was not an item that was discussed at the end of the meeting and voted on by the council. Um, it did slip through the cracks, but we found a way to still have a, a meaningful discussion on it, uh, knowing that, that the full item was coming back. Um, I have to, uh, agree with, uh, some of the council here that I think this is a, is a waste of time. Um, I think it's a waste of the mayor's time and the staff's time. We, right now, have a process that, uh, our agenda items are due effectively the Wednesday after council meetings for the next meeting. Um, and inserting another person, whether that's the mayor or another staff member, I don't think is additive to the process, uh, in a meaningful way. Um, you know, if it's, if the intent was to, uh, make sure that what happened last time doesn't happen again, I think that's a, a valid request, but I don't think this solves the problem, um, because what happened was that item wasn't on the agenda. Now, whether Ryan would have noticed that or not, I don't know, um, but, uh, for having one minor error, this seems like a fairly drastic and, uh, time-consuming policy shift to the council.
And Ryan, I think you're gonna have to take the heat if you re- review and fail to see something.
Believe me, I know. Well, it's before the council. All right, uh, I do not intend on seconding this because it deals with my authority, so, um, I'm not seeing a second as there a second. All right, in that, in that light, then we'll move on. Um, agenda item number twenty-seven is revenue from police response ordinance number two-two-seven-five. Doug, is, you were captain, you had, what, is there anything to present on that?
Uh, no, this was a request at the last council meeting. Council member Vias brought this up during, uh, the request for future agenda items, and it was addendized, as you see. Um, and it was, uh, my understanding was to make sure that, uh, any revenue received from the new ordinance that takes effect in about a month, um, would go towards, I believe it was, police or youth programs.
It should go somewhere into the police budget, wouldn't it? Wouldn't that be the appropriate place to put it?
That's definitely.
Into the budget, along with your law enforcement, I don't know how to categorize that exactly.
It's easy for us to apply it to the sheriff's department contract. I don't think there's gonna be enough revenue to make a meaningful dent in that, you know, roughly twenty-million-dollar contract, but, um, if the council wants to specify that to go to some other specific police program, we certainly can set that up.
You know, it might be, um, might be good to put it into the police and fire activities league. league. I mean, I don't think it's going to be a big number. I hope it's huge. I hope we get all those folks to stop. But the activities league, they have a lot of great stuff. Might have an impact there, huh? Was that for the activities league?
Very well.
Was that, your motion was to give it to the activities league?
To either law enforcement or youth organizations.
Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabrealis absent.
Agenda item number 28 is council committee reports, and this is dealing with those items of boards or other bodies that we sit on as, as council members. So I'll start with Councilmember Rothschild. Anything to report from?
Yes, I have an item here that, actually, I copied this one out of the Daily Press again, but it did come off of the internet as well.
It's off a committee?
This is a council committee report? Oh, I'm sorry. Oops, wrong one.
Yeah, yeah, because we will get to, uh, reports from council members on Agenda item number 30, but this is just dealing with any other boards that we might sit on.
No, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Kennedy?
No, I'm on the VVWA board as an alternate and nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Vias?
VVTA, which is the Victor Valley Transit Authority, which is the busing system we have here, has applied for discretionary grant to start vanpool service. Subject to board approval, Sandbag states that every dollar invested in the vanpool project will return $2 in the yearly federal apportionment. VVTA has also applied for a congestion mitigation air quality funds to start lifeline transportation service from the Victor Valley down to such locations as Loma Linda and Arrowhead Medical Center. These funds were due to lapse, and only VVTA had a project that could be obligated in time. Fixed route ridership for fiscal year 2010-11 has increased over 13.4 percent. County route ridership 10-11, fiscal year 10-11, has increased over the previous year by almost 6.5 percent. Direct access ridership, which is the handicapped or elderly that are very feeble that can't go to a bus stop, so they go directly to their house, has increased by 2 percent. VVTA is accepting deliveries and is preparing to put out into service six Erebach and three Gable cutaway buses. Both are CNG-powered, and I have a picture of them if you guys want to see. Looks like a motorhome. That's it.
All right, thank you. I just recently had the Sandbag Mountain Desert Measure I Committee meeting last Friday. I did express some concern that the city had, and I believe the rest of the committee agreed with regarding loaning of funds between the valley and the mountain desert region. That item has been referred back to the city managers and the technical advisory committees for further discussion because of the concern. So that did occur. As well, we did receive a presentation on the Devoe Interchange Reconstruction Project that has basically made its way through the complete environmental process, and they're on track to break ground on that in 2012. It is a fully funded project, and it is quite amazing to see how they're going to reroute traffic in the Devoe Interchange to make sure that traffic going down in the mornings or coming back in the evenings on the 15 freeway flows much more smoothly than it does now, which we have a bottleneck there, so. But that's the latest report from that, and leave tomorrow for the League of Cities, and when I get back from that, I will fill you in on what happened there. We'll move into agenda item number 29. This is discussion and possible action regarding items for upcoming city council agendas. Councilmember Vias?
Since we're looking to keep the parks open and possibly fund more police, apparently there's a great cry in the city for more police, I'd like to agendize an RFP for a full-service law firm.
Can't be a motion, can it?
No, just consensus, and it doesn't sound like there is.
Okay, and then also, on Victor Valley Transit Authority, it was brought to my attention that Victorville is not advertising at the bus stops, which could bring revenue in. I'm not sure what the history was on it. There was some history that was brought up. It didn't really make a lot of sense to me. It had to do with food for less and the unions. But this is something that can bring the city revenue to advertise at the bus stops, so I'd like to agendize that.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Also, we had the representative from the Housing Authority say that she was going to keep us, me and Ryan, informed of how many complaints that they're getting and how many were actually Section 8, and I thought maybe there could be in the reports section of the agenda, something from her, so that all of the council and the public can see.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I don't know, maybe it can be a part of the consent calendar, but that we get it on a regular basis. I don't have a problem with, and I believe she's more than willing to do that. So I think if we could, yeah, I think that's a good idea to put on the next agenda.
Okay, and then, at the meeting that me and Ryan were at with the Housing Authority, we were looking at other ways, and we heard, I heard Rothschild say that we need to come up with ordinances, and Doug came up with some great ideas that he said had come originally from Rothschild years ago. Doug, you want to see if you can get those agendized?
Sure, they were specifically, Councilmember Rothschild, probably eight or nine years ago, was on a push for a landscaping ordinance specifically for multifamily homes, and one option before the council to consider would be to extend that. There was always some intent, potentially, to extend it, depending on its success, to single-family homes. One thing that the council needs to be very, very careful of is that you don't have the ability to regulate Section 8 or Housing Choice Voucher Program homes individually. That would be discriminatory. However, a bad neighbor is a bad neighbor. You do have the authority to regulate the upkeep of, of these neighborhoods, and that is one option that the council could consider. At that meeting, Councilmember Vias asked me to bring this up as a potential agenda item for discussion, so I believe that's your intent with, with that question. The other item that I discussed was a rental inspection program, and I'm glad the guys from Blue Star are gone now, or they might throw things at me, but they'll probably hear about it very soon, I'm sure. Effectively, the way a rental inspection program works is you charge, you require business licenses, which we already do, and then you charge an inspection fee. I recall seeing a local city adding a fee of $70, and then a code enforcement officer would go to the residence to do an inspection on a house that's, that is used as a rental. The $70 fee provides enough money to hire additional code enforcement officers in order to do this, and those code enforcement officers could then be involved in this rental housing program that, that you could potentially be setting up. I think the other recommendation would be that that be agendized separately for discussion at the council level. Certainly, staff can bring a little bit of information, but it would be appropriate for the entire council to weigh in, maybe at the next meeting, on whether that's something you'd like staff to focus on. One other issue that came up tonight, actually, and I'll be calling Susan Benner this week, she mentioned an exception of Upland and Needles from their housing program. And I'm, that made me a little bit curious as to why and how, and so regardless of council direction, I'm going to do my own research with those cities to find out how they did that, why they did that. Obviously, the, the issue of Housing Choice Voucher Programs is something of great interest to the public and to this council, and I'd like to provide information about what that potential option might be there, that could be there, for the city to take more of an active role in that program. Not that I'm looking for additional work or necessarily wanting to form our own housing authority, but this council historically has always been for more local control, and if that's an option to consider, I'd like to at least bring that information back to you at, at some time in the future.
Okay. I'll get with that, all right.
Is there consensus on putting all three items, essentially the three there, Doug, I think, on the agenda?
Probably not, going to get them in at the next meeting.
Actually, Councilmember Kennedy, I'm glad you brought that up. One thing that I had intended on putting in a memo and just haven't had the time is I'd like the council to be aware, I know Carley's discussed it off and on, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier, that effectively our deadline for the next agenda is tomorrow morning at 9:00. In order to go through the review process of myself, I review every item. Also, our finance division reviews every item for the additional appropriation actions, and then we meet as senior staff to go over those items as well. So when the council asks for something to be on the next agenda, certainly we can put an item on the agenda for discussion, and I believe the intent of the policy was that it would go on the next agenda for discussion purposes only, but that staff would not be asked to have a presentation ready for that agenda. That the intent would be that at the next agenda, the public and the council can consider it, and then direct staff to do research, as may or may not be appropriate.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and then I, I would like to, I, Mr. Mueller has come numerous occasions complaining about us not listing plaintiffs on the closed session items. I, I would like to get a presentation from the attorney so that we can get this answered as to how and why we don't list the plaintiff. Is, is that legal, or are we doing anything wrong? So I would like to get a presentation from our attorney.
I couldn't agree more.
I can give you a quick answer tonight. He was citing the wrong subsection. He was citing a uppercase C, and the reference was to a lowercase c.
But I think it would be good to, yeah, have you give, so that there's this misinformation that's put out there is corrected.
Not a problem. Glad to do that.
And then also, regarding the landscaping contract, as I said before, only giving emphasis of 5% on local businesses, I would like to see a policy that would give emphasis towards local businesses more percentage when awarding contracts.
How would you define a local business?
Well, that would be open for the council as well to talk about, whether it's the high desert or whether it's just Victorville. Maybe if Victorville get a higher one and high desert, a little bit lower than that.
Is there a problem with the policy we have now? I mean, is it not working?
Well, I don't know. This is one of those things, when we became a charter city, we probably could do more. I think it's worth looking into. I'd like to hear from our city attorney what kind of percentages we could go to. I know that this has been brought up before. It's been a while since we've discussed it, but it'd be appropriate just to have some information from you on that and allow the council to discuss it, I think, so.
Glad to provide that, absolutely. Typically, one of your vehicles is through the redevelopment agency. They do specifically allow for preferences for local people in project areas. Unfortunately, that's all on hold right now, but cities can also do some things, so I'll report back.
Mr. Mayor, the current ordinance says that we can apply 3% credit towards a local business, local being a Victorville address, but the total sum is only $1,000. So the risk is that you increase that so drastically that you end up paying more for services than you otherwise normally would. But this is an item that is an option for you as a charter city, and staff would welcome any direction that you could provide regarding changing that policy. We're more than willing to consider any of it.
My last one is I'd like to agendize hiring more police.
I'm fine with that.
We can talk about it until the cows come home. I don't care.
Okay. Councilmember Rothschild, anything to add to upcoming agendas?
I have nothing to add to the agenda items.
Okay. Councilmember Kennedy?
Yeah, we have, we've listened to lots and lots of public comment lately about Brentwood, about quote-unquote Section 8, and I just feel like we aren't dealing with facts. We're dealing with people's impressions, people's beliefs, but no facts. And I'm not arguing about individual incidents that happened in individual people's lives, and how they perceived it, and how miserable it made them, and how they even felt terrorized by it. I'm not arguing that point, but I think if, if we're going to evaluate this problem and decide how to cope with it, we need to deal with facts. So I'm glad Chief Yoder is with us. I'd like to ask him to develop a presentation for this council and for the public. First, on, on how the police department prioritizes calls. One thing we've heard is that loud, obnoxious, noisy, disruptive parties don't get to the top of the priority list. And the reason, if that's true, if they don't get to the top of the priority list, our law enforcement experts must have a reason. So I'd like to understand how law enforcement prioritizes calls, and where these kind of calls land, and how they decide to deal with them. But secondly, what I'd, what I'd like to get a better handle on is this crime that we've been so focused on in Brentwood, how does it compare with crime in my neighborhood at Green Tree? How does it compare with Old Town? How does it compare with all the other neighborhoods in Victorville? Are we just hearing from one highly motivated group of people, or is the crime in Brentwood that much more serious and that much more intense? I'd like to get that kind of understanding, and I'm delighted to hear that we can get some actual facts from the Housing Authority on how many of our criminal households are actually part of this voucher program. I'm going to go ahead with their term. They choose not to call it Section 8, I'm not going to call it Section 8. I'm going to call it their voucher program. Those are the two things I'd like to.
Okay. I don't have anything for upcoming council agendas, so we'll...
Agree with that?
Oh, yeah, we all agree with that? Sorry, I just assumed that was a no-brainer. We'll move on to agenda item number 30. This is reports from council members and staff. Start with Councilmember Rothschild.
Yeah, I'll read this straight up. It says, "If you Google the word 'who pays income tax,' this is what you get. The top 1% of the income earners in this country, this is the United States, pay 38% of our federal taxes. 1% pay 38%. Top 5% pay 59%. In other words, the top 5% of the earners in this country are paying over half of our federal income tax. Top 10% pay 70%. Top 10% pay, I'm not in that category even, top 10% are paying 70% of our federal income tax. Top 25% pay 86%. I'm probably getting into the areas where we, most of us are now, that 86% area. Top 50% pay 97.3%. I got to believe that there's got to be everybody, whether you make $10,000 or $10 million, put some skin in the game. We've got a military out there that protects this country. We've got a lot of federal issues out there that we all benefit from. It seems to me that if half of us aren't paying anything into the federal system, half of us don't even have a vested interest in fixing the problem and saving it. So those statistics are awesome. I, you know, if it keeps going, I suppose in the next 10 years, we'll have, you know, like, maybe 10% paying 90% of the country's problems, and the rest of us are all kind of there. I don't know, but that seems to be skewed, and how that happens, I don't know. You know, Steve Forbes was campaigning on flat tax, and Jim and I were debating a little bit around that issue, and there are some issues about that, you know, where you pick up platform, and then from that point on, you pay, let's pick a number, 10%. So if you make $40,000, you pay $4,000. If you make $50,000, you just pay from the $40,000 up to the $50,000, that increment more. So that would be, everybody would pay in equal, percentage-wise, in equal amounts. Whether you're making $1 million or $40,000, you're still proportionally paying the same into that and picking it. I mean, that's a concept you're going to see out there. But part of the reason why that discussion, at least, is teeing up to this presidential election, is when you see statistics like this, you know, where...
I think, I think he's running for Congress. What do you think? Because we don't have much effect on the federal income tax. I'd be more than happy to conduct a workshop on the flat tax sometime.
I'd be happy to vote for somebody else for Congress, that much I assure you.
Anything?
No, I just, I want to say how pleased I am with the work that Mr. Vanderloop did and all the folks that supported his efforts at West Winds and staff's open willingness to find solutions. I think that, that kind of working together is what we need, and I hope it works at the Doris Davies Bureau.
Council member Vias?
Yes, I'd like to thank West Winds volunteers for what they've done. It's just amazing what the community can accomplish when they come together. And also, I'd like to recognize the citizens on patrol. I've been noticing, you know, some of the things that they've done and saved lives and really helped us keep more eyes out in the community, and I think they need to be commended and recognized as well. And I'd also like to thank everyone that's come up here, and I know it's been difficult for you to come up and speak on crime or what's happening to you and being scared in the neighborhood, and despite what some of the comments were on the council tonight, continue to speak up, continue to let us know what your concerns are, because, you know, we can continue to turn our cheek and have a blind eye, but, you know, when you're in front of us, it's really hard to deny that you're going through that and you're feeling that. So thank you for coming, and I encourage you to keep coming.
Ryan, there's one other thing I have to mention. When Mr. Mueller misspeaks, it is important that we correct him. And the comment about being 800% over budget on legal fees is not a fact. We pay our attorney to provide services to at least five different entities, maybe six, within the city of Victorville. So those checks that get written to the city attorney get distributed to a number of different organizations within the city, group of entities that you hear us announce at every council meeting. A relatively small portion of that goes to the general fund. What we're looking at in the financial report are the revenues and expenses in the general fund. So I would expect to see the city attorney's fees in the general fund to be pretty much on target. His fees are also budgeted, his and other attorneys are budgeted, in all the other different entities. It's just important to understand that, all right? So that kind of a statement distorts the facts.
So in other words, you're entitled to your own opinions but not your own facts. So I couldn't agree with you more. You know, two things I'd like to bring up, a little bit of bad news, but, and I'll end it with good news. Frustrating to me today that the California State Attorney General decided to turn down the acquisition of Victor Valley Community Hospital by Prime Healthcare. I am deeply concerned that we are going to lose this facility in this community. Not only does it provide nearly 100 beds to the Victor Valley, but over 500 jobs in this community, well-paying jobs. And it's just irresponsible of our Attorney General to have turned down the second bidder. You know, I, we're kind of in limbo now. We have no idea where this is going to go, but we need that facility in this community desperately, and for the Attorney General to have done this is just irresponsible and very disappointing. Secondly, though, on a much brighter note, it was in the paper today, but parts of it weren't there, and I think it's important that we highlight it. This could not occur, the securing of United Furniture come in this community without the work of not only city staff, but also our private development partner, Sterling. They were successful in securing the lease. Joe Brady, a local commercial real estate broker, was secure, was successful in securing this company and bringing them to us. And they were looking at several other cities throughout California and throughout the Southwest. So I think it's important that we highlight that that public-private partnership is working out there. Pretty much all the facilities that Sterling has built are completely occupied, and this will most likely cause future development out there, which is a great thing, and hopefully will attract more jobs. So over 400 jobs for the Victor Valley. Our unemployment rate is upwards of 17%. That's the reported number. We believe it's likely higher, near 20%. This will definitely help put a dent in that number, but we continue to work at attracting jobs here in the High Desert despite Sacramento and the state of California, and we will continue to do that. So with that, thank you all for coming tonight.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you have something?
I have just two little things. You keep forgetting about me.
I know, you added staff there.
Maybe we should move it to staff and council. First off, I want to compliment the council on the civility of tonight's meeting. I think a healthy discourse is good for government, and to the extent that it stays civil, it's even better. I also want to remind the council and also the public about the public meeting tomorrow that Captain Yoder organized at 6 o'clock. It's not come and complain about crime, it's come and see what you can do to get involved with your community. So I will be there very briefly at the beginning. I have a commitment at church that I have to get to, but I would hope to see everybody at that meeting as well so that you can find out even more about your options. That's it.
All right, thank you. Now with that, we adjourn.